County Suite, Sally Easter. Any of them?
Yep. Okay. We wanted to get slow children at play or speed limit signs on County Road 740. And we have a new family that has several, I mean, a lot of kids. And they ride, well, a lot of people drive up and down that road extremely fast like it's a highway. Sometimes it is the New County Highway. So that was what we're asking.
We want two.
Yeah.
We want one place before you get to Sally's house. Besides that, there's a lot of people and animals outside at their house. And then the other house is down, a little further down the road, maybe, what, a half mile?
Yeah.
Not quite to Lynn's, but not that trash shop property, but the Baldwin place. Right there, my directions are wrong when I'm out there because I'm telling you it's west of there.
It's north.
But it's north. But we need one there and one there. And we've got to reduce it to 35 where someone's going to get killed.
You can't reduce the speed on the road. It's set at 45.
45.
Okay. How come they can't? Oh, it's only at an intersection. Now, can we put slow children at play signs with some flashing?
Well, I don't think you can flash so you go over there and put some signs up.
Could we do that? Because, and the corner right there, where they come around the corner this way and when people go around the corner this way, there's been near head-on collisions there on numerous occasions. So we really need something to help slow the traffic down.
We'll put some signs up.
The semis, okay, because even the semis are bad, but these people in their personal vehicles, if I know who they are, I call them. And if they don't answer, I call their parents. If they don't answer, I call their grandparents. So I'm not going to take it anymore. Pretty soon, we're going to start making sure that they'll slow down some way. But we won't go to drastic, you know what I mean? If we could just get some help out of you guys.
Yep.
And our next item is, and he already knows what I'm going to say, I want to know why Steve Rust was able to bore across the road on a Saturday without a permit and didn't get in trouble for it, didn't get cited, was able to lock out Sally Easter and Gary's on water.
Well, the lockdown on the water, that's a whole civil matter. It has nothing to do with us.
Right.
He called in the courthouse for a road crossing permit, but wasn't aware of the changes we made because we don't have a secretary in there anymore. He didn't know you have to call the Barnes directly. I've already addressed that and told him the proper avenue to go. So that deal's taken care of.
Did he purchase a permit?
Well, I mean, it's already said and done too late, but he knows for next time how to do it.
Okay.
So I've already taken care of that part of it.
Well, don't worry about it. Okay. I still say he should have been given a citation.
Now, the water line deal, that's a civil matter between you guys and him. It has nothing to do with us here.
Well, that was our biggest concern, the slow children sign and the fact that it's not fair for anybody to bore across the county road with no notice, you know? But there's nothing you can do with it. And Steve Rust gets by with everything anyways. And that's exactly what everybody said. He'll get by with it and he won't pay a fine and he won't pay a permit. So he should at least have to pay a permit.
He will next time.
Yeah, there's not going to be a next time.
Go the proper avenue how to do it, so.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate the signs as soon as possible.
Mike, I hate to be a break-in on the thing. Could you move Scott here?
Yes. Let's go ahead and move Scott into the.
I want your motion to move, uh, 19, uh?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, request for Scotty Fox, Nescotanuga Chief. Um, what's, kind of what's the deal out there?
Well, as you know, of all the stuff that went on with the fire department the last weekend, Scott resigned as fire chief. And two, two of the department out there were involved in the deal. Nathan has he, with them young girls, and Gary, he did too. I mean, he was probably the biggest culprit of the whole thing, but he got arrested for contributing to a minor and Nathan got abuse charges put against him, this girl. And Nathan was still on probation. Scott had just signed him up. He hadn't even got through his probation period. And both of those guys have already resigned, you know?
Well, I talked to Colton Castle, which has resigned as Jet Fire Chief, but he's living out here. He's doing Cherokee. And then I talked to Clint Ray. And both of them has told me that you got to be within 10 miles as a crow flies or 20 minutes to respond time from where you live to the headquarters to be a fire chief, just because of response time. And there's no way that Scotty can be 20 minutes to respond time. And Clint and Colton both advised me that we probably are to maybe table this for now and let Jet, Byron, and Cherokee all sit down and have a meeting. And maybe one of them three, if not all three of them oversee, kind of adopt Nescotanuga and take them under their wing and watch them for a while.
Well, that's what, that's what I was doing with, as a president of the board. I've already talked to Holly and Manchester, even though they ain't in the county. I know those guys really well. And Jay Olson told me that, you know, that he would help mention. I haven't talked to Jet yet because of the fact that, uh, I don't know them either.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know them. And I agree with you on that, but Scotty has been on the fire department now for two years and he has worked.
Two or three.
Worked really hard at doing this. The other night at the board meeting, we didn't have a, you know, and we put him on his interim fire chief until we found somebody. And he's been doing that. And I would like for him to be able to keep that position and talk to Jet and, you know, let, I'd be happy with it, you know, talk to Jet and before anything goes on, but leave him as the interim fire chief anyway.
I don't see no problem with that. That's just if it's.
Just interim?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what we did as a board. We made him interim fire chief, which just take, you know, the secret handle.
Let's just leave it as it is and let's let Cherokee, Byron, and Jet have a meeting and let them discuss it. And I think one of these be overshadowed.
Well, that's fine with me. I mean, that's what.
They got 30 people on each one. They, they could send a few or prostrate or whatever. I think it'd be the best way to.
I think you're right. I mean, that's, you know, and so let Scotty be the interim until they're satisfied with his, you know, we've always co-opted with Jet, you know?
Yeah, and Byron.
And Byron.
And Byron, yeah.
And Byron, we had a fire out there the other day and Byron took charge and I wouldn't mind even co-opting with Byron, you know? And we're not, we're not afraid for help.
Yeah.
So that's what I was, so.
I just don't want to lose it.
Yeah. We don't want to lose that fire department out there. I mean, that's, that's very, very important, especially right now. We've got so many old people there sick. The fire thing, I think we can handle, but that's what I'd like to do.
Okay. I'm good with that. We'll just leave it as is for now. Somebody will be getting ahold of you and talking to you about it inside what they want to do.
I just don't want to close it, you know? I don't want to.
No. You don't need to do that. So I think the insurance, insurance, insurance could go up like crazy for them people over there too, you know?
Our response times have been good, you know? Scott didn't live within, he didn't come out. Well, that's, you know, they're great.
Did table, take them out?
Let's just table it. Take, that's just. Yeah.
Second. So the decision is to leave, I can leave Scotty as the interim.
Sure.
Let him talk to the other chiefs if he has what he wants.
Yeah, I'd start with Clint probably.
Mark, make a motion, I think.
Yeah. Let's just do that.
The mark.
And Gary, that's just like, like when, when it's fire days, hot days, when it's real fire warning. I've been at the Nescotanuga fire for sitting there waiting.
Yeah.
Quite a few times now.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Really? So. On my motion for minutes? A second. You skip that one.
Okay. Make sure I look at the right one.
There you go.
And no warrants for painting?
No. Wow. Stolen over your way?
Not really.
Liking, rain, that's it. McGolden King got interrupted yesterday for 20, 20 minutes to kick that liking, but other than that, it's the only way to attack me.
I'm scared we're going to start missing that rain. It's going to get hot and dry.
I know. Dad always said, don't ever cuss the rain. Cuss the mud. Don't cuss the rain.
Yeah.
It'll go away and won't come back and you'll wish you had it. I know everywhere, Kingfisher all the way up there and the beach looking real good. We had a lot of good rain when we needed it.
Went to Texas over the weekend. You get down there south of Gainesville, it's about ready to cut. It's all golden.
I bet by Wichita Falls down there, I bet it is getting cold.
Yeah, it looked good.
Altus, where they usually kick off that first week of June out there. Yeah, that's where that's on. First or second week.
It just looks different. You leave here, it's green.
You get out there, it's all gold.
Yeah.
It was all brown Saturday and it was still a little easy to pull.
Oh, yeah. He's awful bored, you fool, right?
He helps me a lot, so I thought I'd help him a little bit.
We've got more and more rye every year since, like, everybody went to bowl seed cleaners. I just don't think they're quite as good as the old ones.
Is this one? Is this one? Is this one?
This one? We've got more and more rye every year since, like, everybody went to bowl seed cleaners. I just don't think they're quite as good as the old ones.
Is this one? Is this one? Is this one? Is this one? Is this one?
This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? This one? Review six months' bids. I'm sorry. I guess. I guess we're going to have.
Okay. Yes.
Second. Transfer appropriations from Assistant VI to VI personnel. My motion for transfer? Second.
Bronwyn's support letter.
She said that this is the community that's trying to help get Bobby and the little boys.
Yeah. We did last year.
Yeah, we did last year. I still want to give the money, the oil water. I'd rather have water line infrastructure.
Don't have to do it. There's up there.
Motion for. Just the one favor.
Okay. Just the one.
Transfer document from Nescotanuga Rescue to Alpha County Works Management. FY 26 detention transport contract. Stay. Oh, crap. I thought we just signed it down there. Signed it twice. Motion for contract. Transfer document from Nescotanuga Rescue to Alpha County Works Management. I don't like a motion for transfer.
I'll make a motion for it on this. I'll say. I'm pretty right. Kinda cleared it up for six months, I guess. No, I'm sorry, I thought that's what it was.
Yeah.
Upper Warren Bridge, District Two. Any motion on number eleven or not?
Basically, did, didn't we?
Well.
You can just copy it from number one.
Just copy it, that's the same for now.
Okay, uh, so this one. Twenty-five, oh, six. Give those two down. If you guys need to see a list, I can just.
Well, the yard is smaller late. Deeds. Eight-five. Eight-five. Going ahead and award it, I guess. I guess we're gonna have to award it. Guess we're gonna go Deeds. Eight-five dollars. Second, Deeds. Upper Warren Bridge materials list. Rover Yard is sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. About equipment is seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six. Still make a motion for award.
Remind you of your.
Yes. Second. Thank you. Transfer appropriations from assistance VI to VI personal. Make a motion for transfer. Ron Ben's four letter.
She said that this is the community that's trying to help get Bobby in a little place.
We did last year.
Yeah, we did last year. I still want to give the money to the water. You don't have water line infrastructure.
Don't have to do it. There's nothing there. I was just checking. Say, just the one, third. Hi, just the one, first. Transfer document from Nescotanuga Rescue to Alpha County Works. Oh, FY twenty-six detention transport contract, stable. Oh, crap, I thought we just signed it down there. Signed twice. Uh, motion for contract. Just the one? Yeah. All fair? Transfer document from Nescotanuga Rescue to Alpha County Works. I'll make a motion for transfer. I'm not using the District Two.
Oh. I haven't been describing this stuff, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. Just write table on that.
I already make a motion on the easement. I'll make a motion on easement. I'll say. All fair? Interesting business. Maybe Jerry will say.